Okay, good evening. Are we good to go? Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting of Tuesday, June 6th. May I please have an approval of the agenda?
Thank you.
Before we move on to comments from the public, I would like to take a brief moment to recognize our student council representative, and this being her last meeting. Ms. Sierra Gray is a senior who I think will actually be graduating on Saturday.
Yeah. 100 percent.
I'm not sure I signed that.
I know I signed it. Sierra, it's been an absolute pleasure to have you at the table with us this year, and I want to thank you for your participation and your enthusiasm with which you, I think, really inspired a lot of activities to happen at the student council, and we've all really appreciated having you here. So, thank you very much. Best of luck. I'm sure other committee members would like to share their thanks with you as well.
I've loved sitting next to you for your year of being here, and I've appreciated your voice for your fellow students, and you've done it sometimes with humor, and you've often done it with passion for your beliefs, and I think that that's a great value for anybody to have. So, it's been lovely to watch. Have a little, just a little graduation gift.
Thank you.
You'll maybe smile or go, "Why did she give me this?" Hopefully, in the years to come, it will come in handy.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I just want to say thank you. It's been so nice to get to know you, and I even get to see you in the morning sometime and get a friendly wave. So, thank you for sitting here with us and commenting when you feel it's necessary, and all you've done for your class. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, it's fun having you. They bring a different energy. And so, in the tradition, we always present the nameplate for you to keep. I'm not sure that you want to put that on your dorm room door. Maybe at home, but...
Thank you, Sierra.
Thank you, Sierra.
And with that, if you want to take your things and dash, we totally understand.
Join your family.
We wanted to take the moment to thank you.
Thank you, guys. It's been really fun.
And come back and visit any meeting.
Oh, wow.
See you Saturday.
I'll see you Saturday.
Thank you, Sierra.
I'll take it first to look at them.
Okay. Good night. Bye-bye. Thanks again.
Okay, thank you all for that. Moving right along, are there any comments from the public this evening? Mr. Martin?
I'd love to.
I'm just wondering, for the benefit of the microphone, if we might be able to ask you to come, would you, are you able to come up?
Yeah.
And that way, the folks at home can hear the comment. We can just move it to the end of the table for him. Here we go. Thank you. And, Mr. Martin, I'll just ask that when you're finished with your comments, if you could just return to your seat, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
I can stay here. Thank you. The reason I would like to comment is because I've been aware now for some time that many of the doors to the buildings in our school system, the disabled button does not work. I've made this known to the principal of the middle school over a month ago. The doors still, three out of the four doors that I pushed the buttons today, still did not function. This was after school. They should have worked. This building, the "in" button, does not function at the main door or at the pool door. The elementary school, neither of the buttons functioned. The superintendent's office, the handicapped access door, is locked. And I was told, last time I went to the superintendent's office to make this point, that these doors should be working, that if I wanted access, that I should knock at the door, which I did today, and I was not answered. So, I knocked again, at which point I decided that nobody's going to come open the door for me, so I went around and went in the other non-handicapped access place. So, I don't know why the schools seemingly could care less about handicapped access for buildings that are used, as this one is, for public meetings. And I will once again state that I believe that this meeting is illegal, because this building is not in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act and other acts, both state and federal. So, I would love for the doors to be fixed and access granted to disabled people. I would like to know why the bus driver has been told to block one of the handicapped parking spaces in front of the elementary school, well, on the side of the elementary school, but it's kind of the front now. She told me that she was instructed by Superintendent Cozort to purposely block one of those handicapped spots, when it is totally unnecessary for that bus to function in its capacity to transport disabled children. They could stop short of the handicapped spot. I don't know why the superintendent just seemingly does not care about disabled access to our schools and making it easier. I don't know why the parking spots were put where they were, 100 steps away from the front door. The parking spots behind the building, you have to go on the polar opposite side of the building to gain access through the front door at the elementary school. Why are they putting disabled spots behind the building and then asking disabled people to then go entirely around the building? Excuse me while I look at my Copius notes here. I've asked already at the beginning of school that a sign be added to the entryway of the elementary school that also designates that there are disabled parking spaces in addition to both staff and bus parking. Because when people aren't familiar with the school, when they approach the school for the first time, they don't know where they're supposed to park unless they park around back, because they're not supposed to go in that bus and staff parking. There's nothing that says that disabled people come in this entrance, here's where the parking spots are. They're told, they're not supposed to go there. I don't understand why that hasn't been fixed. A sign hasn't been put in there. I'm wondering why the Nantucket Elementary School's test scores are abysmal. They're in the bottom 20 percent of the state, and why they aren't improving. And I'm wondering whether there is anyone who is responsible for that, who needs to have their feet held to the fire to improve our test scores? Because at 20 percent, that's abysmal. That's failing. And I find it ironic that two out of the 10 doors that I tried today, also 20 percent, didn't work, didn't open. I hear a lot about protected classes and making sure that our students know about protected classes and go follow the law and look after those people. And when I hear that we're supposed to have compassion and empathy and fill the bucket, and then this is the response that I get when I'm just trying to simply make things better for the disabled in Nantucket Public School System, that's embarrassing to me. As a member of this town, a long, long time member of this town, that's embarrassing to me that seemingly the schools don't care about handicapped access. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Martin.
So, through the chair, if I may respond.
Sure. I would just like to remind everybody that I'm happy to have a response, but I would like to not have a back and forth this evening at the meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Martin did come to my office today, and we spoke, and he raised several of the issues that he raised tonight. I first would have to say, I, of course, very much disagree that we don't care about handicapped children or visitors. He had specifically asked about the designated handicap parking. We have more than adequate handicap parking at all of our school sites, as well as the central office. There are five designated spots in the Surfside Lot. There are two designated spots near NIS, closer than any other parking spots to NIS. There are four designated spots near NES, which are closer than any other parking spots. There are four designated spots in front of the central office. There are three designated spots in front of the high school and CPS. One designated spot behind the high school, and two designated spots in the pool parking lot. He is accurate that we are having problems with the handicap buttons. We have ordered a part for the high school, and my understanding is that that is supposed to be here Friday, and that will be repaired on Monday. The handicap button at the middle school is defective, and the vestibule, that's a brand-new setup, and that is, has been ordered and will be replaced by the contractor. And I think the handicap button at the elementary school does work, but it was designed not to open by pushing during the school day, which we explained, I think, to Mr. Martin, and I believe that he understands that. And I think, just to clarify, today, when you came to my office, you came up the ramp and you were pounding on the door, which scared my faculty. And that's why they didn't open the door, Mr. Martin. You weren't knocking on that door. Then you came around and entered, and we were able to have, I think, a relatively calm conversation at that point. I am happy to meet you whenever you have a concern, but we have to have a civil and calm conversation. And I thought your agitation, which is understandable on this issue, but it was beyond what might be reasonably expected in, you know, your actions of banging on doors and shouting at people, and taking pictures of our children at the elementary school when you've been asked not to do so, those are inappropriate, and they scare students and staff. And I don't think you want to do that. I don't think you mean to do that, but that's the outcome. And I would expect you to set a more appropriate example for your children, our children, and refrain from behaviors that, quite frankly, frighten people. If you cannot do this, you know, then we'll have to resort to other measures, which we really don't want to do. You have a child at the elementary school, and I think it is understandable and right that you have access to that school.
So, may I make a request that at our next meeting on June 20th, we have an update on the progress of some of the repairs and maintenance items that you had said would be addressed in the next week or so, and keep us posted on those things?
Sure.
May I just ask one question for clarification?
Sure.
As we have a locked door system, I would imagine that those doors would not be usable by just pushing if the doors are locked. Is that correct? You'd have to ring the...
That's correct. That's correct. And the secretaries will open the door.
They will physically come and open the door?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I will accept a very brief comment, Mr. Martin.
You don't want a back and forth. It's impossible, at the middle school, I understand, that you're supposed to go to the window inside of the vestibule to be let into the school, to talk to the person who'd be let into the school, correct? If the outside door doesn't open, how are you supposed to get to the inside window to ask to be let into the school?
Right. And I think that they've...
There are multiple more things that are broken than you send in.
Yeah.
Parks were ordered for, and obviously, I don't like...
Okay. Well, I think that, I appreciate your comments and concerns, and we're always happy to hear them, either both in public comment, or if you have specific issues, feel free to email me as Chair or Mr. Cozort, so we can have a way to track what some of those concerns are and make sure that we're meeting the obligations. I appreciate you coming here tonight, and I will go ahead and move on through the agenda unless there are any other public comments this evening. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Okay, presentations and discussions of issues of interest to the committee. Karen McGonigal and our annual technology report. Would you like us to sit? Or, we have it in the packet, so...
We have it in the packet.
Okay.
It's really more for the benefit of the, anyone who's watching on TV.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Okay. So, basically, this is the annual presentation for the technology department to the school committee, and this collage says it all without any words. It essentially...
Yes, it sure does.
...is in your packet.
Yeah. I saw, no, it's actually right here, I see it.
Really, what we're all about is our students, and I have some photos that run the gamut from the elementary school all the way up to the high school, showing the different ways that we use in our classroom. Okay, some accomplishments this year. We've done overview. We did a few things for our network infrastructure, things that you don't see, but helped to provide better services to our students and teachers. We upgraded the core switching firewall. This is the core of the network that all the traffic passes through, all of our internet traffic, all of our data traffic, the speech information system, everything passes through this switch in this firewall. So, this was a upgrade that will help, that helped improve performance. I replaced some aging copper wire between the server room and the MDF, and the MDF and the boiler room with fiber. This was a long time coming. They were the only two places in the built-in campus that did not have fiber between closets, so we have complete fiber network throughout the system. We expanded our virtual server configuration and retired several aging file servers. And of course, there was the six-classroom expansion at CPS. Classroom technology, I don't even know if I'm on camera.
Stand behind the podium. Come closer to us.
I kind of felt like I was...
There you go.
There I am now. I'm in the microphone as well.
There you go.
Classroom technology, we went one-to-one at the high school from grades nine through 11 with district-provided devices, and bring your own device at grade 12. Students who could not or would not bring their own device were provided with a district-owned device. This expanded on the one-to-one program at the middle school, so we had a very successful year with our one-to-one program. I replaced some smartboards at the middle school and the high school, and iPads and laptops at the elementary school. And we launched our new website on school wires, and the response to that has been overwhelmingly positive. I think everybody really likes the new interface. It's easy to read, easy to find things, and it's very easy for our webmasters to take care of as well. MCAS morphed from Park, and it's still online. There were a few changes, both technologically and with the way the test was administered this year. It went pretty smoothly. There were some glitches, but we did a really, a pretty good job administering that test. We continue with the online access for ELL tests, grades four to 12, and MAP at the middle school. Building project is moving along. From a technology perspective, I worked with the vendors on the equipment bids, collaborated with Diane and the project team, and worked with contractors on the design, installation, and configuration of the technology in the building. We are just about at the last stages of finishing up the network. We have the phones in there. Phones work. We, the AV system, the camera system, all of that is installed and on the network. So, we're in the final phases of putting in the network and all of that infrastructure, and the computers should be arriving sometime during the summer. Things that are going on in our classroom. The team provided a combination of formal and informal coaching and training to teachers at all levels. We support, of course, our basic core services of hardware, software, and use of applications. And we assisted technology integration specialists at both the middle school and the elementary school in their jobs. Google Apps for Education is now known as G Suite. They decided that was a much more catchy term. It's the same exact product that we've been using, and we're continuing to see an exponential increase in use by teachers and staff. This has brought us to seriously evaluating the migration of our Exchange email system to Google Mail. Right now, we have two platforms that we're working with, and we need to standardize on a single one, and it makes the most sense to move forward with the Google Mail. We're just, at this point, we're working on timing and change management. Social media and multimedia, of course, is a core requirement for any school district. This presents challenges to our physical network, which we are continually upgrading and expanding, and in the coming year, we will be upgrading our internet bandwidth. We are always balancing student safety and security and legal compliance with increasing demand for openness and access to tools and sites so that students can explore and be creative and discover and engage in mastery of emerging technologies, but we will also want to ensure that they're safe. It's a tough, it's a tough balance to continually manage. Again, I spoke a little bit about MCAS in grades three to eight. My staff provided technical support and training for test administration, and they collaborated with the Assistant Principal and Associate Principal NES on managing, configuring, and administering the tests. Same thing with the online access for ELLs. They worked directly with the Director of ELL to make sure that staff was properly trained and test administration went smoothly. And MAP at CPS, we've been doing this for quite a few years now, and that's generally a pretty smooth process as well. In the classroom, our mobile technology consists primarily of one-to-one Chromebooks from grade six to 12. This is the platform that we have pretty much standardized. It works perfectly with G Suite and provides the tools that our students need to be successful. At the younger grade levels in the elementary school and for many of our students, we continue to use iPads. The smaller device and the touchscreen is an excellent tool for that level. We use laptops with our smartboards and in some of our NES classroom stations. We still do use traditional computers. Regular word processing, graphic arts, research, and online courses are still delivered in this manner. It's starting to become less frequent, but we still do use them, and we continue to use them in our computer labs and in our administrative offices. And for our specialized areas such as art, photography, and music, we use the IMAX. Our smartboards are utilized for presentations, group projects, and interactive activities in the classroom, and we have them in all of our computer labs and pretty much all of our classrooms now. Now comes the really exciting part, the numbers. This year, we have an inventory of 352 desktop computers, 351 laptops, 129 iPads, and 1,382 Chromebooks. We have 121 smartboards, and there's a new category this year, interactive projectors, which we have installed in the middle school and will be installing in the intermediate school. These are short throw projectors that project an image onto a standard whiteboard, but includes touch capability, much like a smartboard. This is just a chart showing our inventory, going back five years of what we have, and you'll see that progression towards mobile technology and the Chromebooks. The zero purchase for desktops for FY '17 is a little deceptive. I am planning on adding some to the inventory in the end of the year this year. We just haven't had a great need to replace the ones that we had until this year. This is a visual of our devices. As you see, Chromebooks tend to roll first here. And this is a visual of the, at the yearly inventory. For professional development, we've moved away from formal large group presentations and more to informal small group coaching and mentoring for staff based on specific needs and requests. My staff has been meeting mostly with small groups, working on needs for Aspen and Google Apps and a variety of applications. There's a lot of on-demand professional development going on. As staff requests, we provide what they need. MCAS online, we provided training in the test coordination and test administration. Same thing with access for staff that required it. And we usually, at the beginning of the year, provide open drop-in sessions for a variety of applications.
Yes.
Our administrative functions remain pretty much the same. We manage the Aspen Student Information System. This year, for the second half of the year, our focus has been on the development of the Family Connection Portal. We're almost ready to test that. We should be ready to test it next week and then launch it to existing parents this month, and then for new parents for registration in the summer. We provide report customizations on demand and import the assessment data into the system. Data collection reporting, it's pretty much automated, but it still takes continual management of the data to make sure it's accurate and up to date so that it can be reported to the state. Our reporting occurs three times a year, in October, March, and June, and we're coming on to our June reporting.
Karen, I'm just going to ask you to pause for one second.
Yes.
Dr. LeProus had a call to duty.
No. With technology, with the epic, there isn't anybody in the hospital right now that can book the case.
Oh, I was over there, like, on the first day they switched.
So, that's where I'm going, to see if I can book the case.
Godspeed.
Bye.
Thank you, Karen.
Okay, NIS. This slide is not in your slides. I apologize. It is in the report. Oops. Sorry about that. Okay. At NIS, I briefly went over some of the things that we were working on. The wired and wireless network is almost completed. There are 91 office, classroom, and conference phones in the building. 28 interactive projectors and document cameras are going in as we speak. The contractor is there this week installing and testing that equipment, and we're going to be adding 21 desktops, 47 laptops, and 150 Chromebooks for grade five, so to have a one-to-one program there. We will also be bringing over existing Chromebooks for grades three and four. So, we have enough devices for every student to use a device whenever we want. We're going to use a cart-based system, where the carts will be in the classroom and the students will take them out when they need them. They're not going to be having their face in a screen all day long.
Yeah.
Looking ahead, well, the first one is opening NIS. I'm so excited. I hope everybody else is too. I just can't wait to get everything going. And you have no idea what's going inside those walls with the wiring and the networking and everything behind the scenes to make it happen. Like I said, we were going with one-to-one at NIS with Chromebooks, and we're going to continue at the middle school and the high school. We're refreshing grade six this year and adding to grade nine. We are replacing a lot of projectors at the elementary school. We have a lot of aging equipment there, so we're going to be doing that this summer, and we're going to be adding some iPads at the elementary school for the younger students. I'm upgrading smartboards at the high school and the middle school. The high school smartboards have been completed, and the middle school will be completed this summer or very, very early fall. Like I said before, we're upgrading the internet bandwidth, and we will be launching the Aspen Connection Portal. I'm also going to be working with the community school on moving their offices from Candlewick Closet to their new location at the elementary school. That's an exciting project, and there's a variety of other office moves that are going on that I did not put into the slideshow.
Awesome. I know it felt like a closet at Candlewick Corner. I'm just kidding. No, I know. It was beautiful. Yeah. Karen, thank you very much. I actually really have always looked forward to this annual report. Do any committee members have any questions or comments for Karen?
No. Thank you for the great proposal. Okay.
I have a quick question. This is sort of, sorry. I hear from some of our sports players that it's challenging for them to do homework on their Chromebooks while they're traveling on the boat. Is that correct?
Yes, and I have heard the same thing. I don't know if it's some...
Yes, and I have heard the same thing. I don't know if it's something in the security in the Chromebooks or a combination of the, I do know that the High Line has kind of erratic internet access.
Okay. I didn't know if that was something on our end or their end, a little bit of both?
I don't think so, but it could be a little bit of both. I do know that if the boat is crowded going one direction, the wireless access point sends out what's called leases to devices. And if those are full and it doesn't have time to refresh itself when the next floor of people get on, if they don't reset that access point or the router, it won't, it won't allow more people on the road. That's part of what's happening.
Okay, so it doesn't have anything to do with the Chromebook specifically?
I don't think so.
Okay, alright.
We certainly will investigate that further.
Exactly, of course.
It would be nice for our students to be able to work while they were traveling.
I had heard that a while ago. I haven't heard it recently, so that we're definitely looking into it.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your report. This is very exciting.
Yeah, thank you so much, Karen. We appreciate it. Moving on to the draft school committee self-evaluation, this looks like the policy committee got their hands in on it and made some improvements. Do you, would you like to speak to that, Jen?
Sure. I actually, I kind of enjoyed this, making it specific to our committee.
Excellent. It was really great work. I didn't know if you wanted to talk about the process a little bit.
Well, we went, I'm just trying to locate mine. Yeah, thank you. Um, we went question by question and as a committee made suggestions for you guys to review. And the nice thing is they're printed in red, so you can see the suggested changes. But we really just tried to focus on, you know, when we were filling this out, a lot of times I feel like, you know, if people don't fully know, it ends up being a disagree or a don't know because the questions were not really specific to us, I think, or clear. So we really tried to go through each one and make them clear and specific. So, if you guys have any questions after looking at it or any suggestions.
The only thing I would add is that you'll see that we split strategic planning and fiscal management.
Yes.
Because sometimes when they were combined, people might have one answer or one aspect of it and a different answer for the other. So that was something that we felt.
And they're both really important categories and big categories to have their own section with that, so.
Well, thanks to you and Zona and Mike for taking this on. Colleen, did you have any comments or questions?
I'm really excited to fill this out for next year.
Well, thank you very much for that.
Was there the suggestion that the superintendent should have an opportunity to weigh in on the evaluation?
No, I don't recall talking about that.
Okay, moving on to Policy DB. This would be a new policy for adoption. And again, Jen, I might turn to you as somebody who's on the policy subcommittee, just tell us a little bit about it.
So, this policy, we decided MASK has this policy and this was something that we don't have in our policy handbook. So we thought that it was important to add.
It seemed very straightforward and I agree that it's a nice addition. Any comments or questions? Okay, thank you very much for that work.
That will be brought for a vote at the next meeting, as we typically do.
Fantastic. Moving on to committee discussion and votes to be taken. I noticed that our first vote is to approve the NES fourth grade overnight field trip to the Museum of Science, which took place already on June 1st and 2nd. I understand there was a problem in the administration of not getting the application into us in a timely manner before our last meeting. This is an annual trip that NES takes. I would have far more concern if this was a brand-new trip, but I would appreciate and encourage the administrative team at NES to make sure that they get these to us before trips take place. So, with that said, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the field trip to the Museum of Science.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. A vote to approve agreement between NPS and Butler Sporting Goods, excuse me, a contract for $50,000 dated July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. A vote to approve a gift donation from Ahold Financial Services Stop &amp; Shop to the NES gift account for $3,011.04.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. A vote to approve a gift donation from Alan and Patricia Myers to the NES gift account for the first grade library, $500.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. A vote to approve a gift donation from the Nantucket Golf Club Foundation Tuition Assistance through the Community Foundation for Nantucket to Nantucket Community School for the We Wellers Program in the amount of $12,420.30.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much to the Golf Club Foundation for that. A vote to approve the gift donation from Ahold Financial Services Stop &amp; Shop to the CPS gift account for $1,076.19.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A vote to approve the gift donations from Chartwell to NHS for fiscal year 17, a grant of $1,000.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If I may, um, Martin is putting together the total list of donations. We'll do that at the end of June.
You just read my mind.
Um, so, we've talked about it and he'll have that ready for you at the July meeting.
Thank you, Martin.
Great, yeah, thank you.
I appreciate that.
And as we always say, it's incredible, the spirit of giving on the island.
Absolutely.
We're.
Very, very fortunate.
We're very fortunate.
Get this one. Get out of my mind.
Yeah, sorry.
We have policies that are up for a vote that are amended. Policy DBJ budget transfers. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Policy DJE bidding requirements.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Policy DKC, expense and reimbursements.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'd like a motion to approve the appointment of the school committee clerk, which I believe is Logan O'Connor.
That's correct.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
With gratitude. Thank you, Logan.
Thank you.
A vote to approve the May 16th, 2017 meeting minutes.
So moved.
And may I have a motion, oh, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And a motion to approve our transfers and invoices for this week, noting that there are no transfer requests, which we are also very grateful for.
Second.
So moved.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Amen. Excellent, alright. Superintendent's report.
Uh, let's see, we have an enrollment update, I think, that went out to you today that shows five more students than in May. Um, and, you know, it always puzzles me when I see activity, whether it's withdrawals or enrollments this time of year. It's a very late, very late in the year to be doing that. But, um, so we are at 1595 and approaching that 1,600 figure again. We'll see if we hit that. I believe we will, as there's a pretty hefty kindergarten registration going on at this point.
Fantastic.
So.
Fantastic.
And then, on the horizon, we are staying on top of our schedule. We do have the ELL report by Jeremiah at next meeting. That's the second meeting in June because that will allow us to report on the access scores that are just coming back on our children, which is about their English proficiency.
Perfect.
So, that is coming up and then we'll have the report from Chris Mori on athletics. And those will be the two, the two big things for June. And then, at some point, you'll wanna make a decision. Usually, we have one meeting in July and you may want to decide when that meeting is going to be.
I think Logan and I had an email exchange about that and I was going to recommend July 11th and talk about it at this meeting to see if people had vacation or travel plans. The 11th and the 18th were the options, most suitable options in front of us.
When are you thinking of having a retreat?
Well, that would be another.
It's a conversation.
Conversation to have. I think what we may do, if we could, is, I love the doodle, where we put a handful of dates out and let people sort of prioritize which ones are there would work. And maybe you and I can talk about what some of those menu options might be. I know we have the new school coming online and we have a lot of things happening this summer, even when the students aren't in school, so.
I'll have that come out from our office to the school committee and then we'll look at what date in July or August.
Does July 11th seem to work right now?
That works for me.
Okay. And, um, I'll have to remember to check with Zona and Tim to make sure it works with them, but thank you very much. Um, thank you, Mike. And thank you for the email. I think we had a brief update on the Sparks Road, Bartlett Road update, and we're still waiting to hear a fuller report from Mike Burns and at some point when they feel like they are making more significant progress toward that end.
And I think that actually has an effect on where we're going to place the crosswalk and whether we're going to put it back in the exact same spot, or do we wanna bring it maybe down in between, a little bit further away from that roundabout. So, we'll, we'll talk about that further.
Subcommittee work group. I mean, policy has been clearly busy.
Yes.
So thank you for all of that.
Next week.
Thank you. I would just report out that the negotiations with the teachers' unions are, so, teachers' union is still taking place and we're hopeful that we'll have some resolution before the end of the fiscal year. I think we're on track for that. I did wanna just take a moment, and I don't know, Dr. Bucky, if you would mind coming up, for those who were not in attendance last night at the academic excellence, or the academic awards nights, to talk about the Don Allen Scholarship that was given to one of our students last night. It was an incredibly moving and wonderful gift and I just wanted the community at large to be able to know about that if they hadn't yet.
We had a very successful academic awards night last night. We gave away lots of wonderful recognitions to students on academic excellence and achievement, but Don Allen contacted me and they wanted to start a scholarship this year. And we presented it last night to Vincent Goulding. It will be a full tuition, room, and board for his education at New England Automotive Technology Institute. And so, they are going to send him to school and then he'll come back to the island and be trained and ready to work the tunnel.
That's incredible.
It's amazing. I mean, when we talk about the gifts we receive, I think there was not a dry eye in the house last night. And Vincent very proudly and graciously accepted his gift. So we're very proud of him and very grateful to Don Allen. Thank you so much.
There were some wonderful laptops, too, given.
Oh my gosh, a lot of laptops!
Three laptops, yeah.
I, that's one of my favorite nights.
Yeah, it's a nice night.
It's a great night.
Yes, Colleen. Just a report that the scholarship committee met today.
Oh, great.
And I'm not gonna provide any names of the students that we did meet and they will be awarded on Saturday, graduation.
Fantastic. Oh, right, that's happening this week.
So moved.
Yes, yes.
Is there a few things, Dr. Bucky?
Are there any other comments or questions? May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.